2019 at 7:00 PM in the City Council Chambers, 301 South Fifth Street will now come to order. We will have invocation by the Pastor Greg Gilberto, North Point Nazarene Church. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Evening, everybody. Before I pray, I just want to tell you that before I pray, I pray. Amen? And I ask the Lord to help me pray as I pray, as we all pray. Amen? And you've got to know this, every one of you are lifted up. And we love you as a council, appreciate you mayor. When the going gets tough, the right people stand up and do the right thing. And we're here to love you, lift you up, and pray in Jesus' name. Can we do that? Father, we thank you for this opportunity. Scripture says how beautiful, wonderful, and pleasant it is when the brethren live together in unity. Father, this is a good city. Papa Bluff is strategically like in the heartland of America. There's a cross that sits right over us. I pray that the same cross would shadow us today. Holy Spirit be with us, be with each and every council member. I pray, Lord, for their extended family. When the phone rings, I pray that they wouldn't shake, there wouldn't be any wondering, but there'd be goodness in the air and freshness. Lord, I thank you for the wonderful change of the season that we're sensing. And Lord, even today, Lord, I know they're going to make some decisions, maybe not tonight, but in the next near future, for the future of our city, a city set on a hill. Lord, make this thing be right in our hearts, in our lives, for the entire community. Lord, we bless these people that are going to make decisions based on what they have in front of them. We just ask that you, the same Spirit that raised Jesus from the grave, would give them wisdom that they don't even have on themselves. Touch like only you can, I pray, in Jesus' name. And everyone here said amen.
Amen.
We will now have Pledge of Allegiance by Lieutenant Commander, Retired Larry Kimbrough, Vietnam Veterans of America, number 1056.
This is going to be in two parts. The first one I want you to repeat after me. Go Cardinals. Now, this one you'll please say with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Councilman DeGerris?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Cornman?
Here.
Councilman Davis? I'm sorry, Councilman Black? Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda.
Mr. Mayor, before somebody, before anybody gets up and speaks, City of Papa Bluff are members of the Missouri Municipal League, like most cities in the state of Missouri. They provide information to municipalities across the state, they hold seminars. We just came back from a three, four day seminar back in September. They also do a lot of publications to help councils. One of those is called Conduct of Council Meetings. It's about a 30 or 40 page book. And there's a section in there on citizen participation, and I would just like to read this paragraph. And it's just as much for the council as it is for the citizens. But what it says is, "When a visitor is addressing the council, all members should be attentive and listen politely. If the speaker is taking too much time, or is drifting from the subject, or is personally abusing council members, the mayor should be the person to cut off the speech. Even though one must be polite, it is not necessary to be intimidated by a rude speaker. He often irritates everyone else in the room, and as much as the council should be cut off as quickly and painlessly as possible." I know we've had several instances where the council's been accused of things with no basis, and I just wanted to read that and let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this opportunity. My purpose is, tonight, is to praise the Police Department of Papa Bluff for the outstanding jobs they've been doing. My bona fides are, since 1970 to October 19, 2016, I have been fighting communism, dictatorships, and terrorism, global wide. If you were in the military, in the Special Ops Task Force, Battalion, Brigade, Division, Corps, or aircraft carrier group, or air squadron, you came to my organization, part of the National Intelligence Structure. Those are my bona fides. Recently, two years ago, I moved back to Papa Bluff, 951 Cynthia Street. Mr. Massingham was a neighbor one time, next door. The reason I'm here, because in the last two months, I've had several incidences. I confronted a gentleman walking down my driveway with my landlord. And we confronted him, and we called 911. The police responded. It was Officer Ellis, fantastic, he was there quickly. His other team apprehended the individual, suspected alleged thief, and I call him a terrorist. And apprehended him, and he was incarcerated, well, arrested. And I identified him. But then more recently, this last week, my garage was broken into. Things, you know, what you keep in the power tools and stuff, antiques and stuff like that, were taken. There's no way to praise those things. But I want to praise Danny Chief Whitley for the outstanding men and women that he has hired for this community to protect us. And I speak of Officer Ellis, who were involved in the landlord episode. And then more recently, Lieutenant Moore, B. Moore, Lieutenant Moore, they did an outstanding job, very professional, and very thorough, and used common sense. And I'm very proud to be part of, a member of Papa Bluff, and I'm so glad we have men and women of the caliber, of the high caliber of the Police Department here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council.
I want to say hello to Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, your name and address, please.
Gael Freer, 97 County Road, 534 Papa Bluff.
Thank you.
And I want to again say hi to Mr. Mayor and to the members of the council. My questions revolve around the need for moving the City Hall to another place out on Shelby Road. I want to know first, I have about five or six questions, and I'm just going to ask the questions, and then you all will answer them whenever during the meeting, okay? Has the City Council canceled the consulting contract? Why did the city have to have architects construct plans when we already have dilly and traxle on contract? Why did we need to get new ones? Why did we have to spend $600,000 on that? Why didn't the city have a public forum to discuss the plans for the City Hall? Why does the police station have to be the most expensive property in the area? My father was a policeman. I believe in policemen. I think we are, we've got, and I think Papa Bluff has a great police department, but I would rather see them get benefits than a fancy building. Let's see. And I think that, those were my questions. I just think that we need to keep City Hall in the center of town, where the heart of Papa Bluff is, not on the outskirts somewhere where nobody can get to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, appreciate it. 903 North Garfield. Some of the things I've done since we were here last, scheduled meeting with Representative Jeff Shaw. I've got a meeting with you and Mark tomorrow, meeting scheduled with the Senator Libya, made contact with a leader from Loroc, Arkansas, who's looking into Memphis, where they have extra people as far as who applied for policemen there. I'm having an urban leadership conference coming up on the 17th through the 19th, and I will be doing some lookout there for potential candidates. I will, after the 20th of October, I'll have a lot of free time between the 20th of October and the 20th of December to really work hard on this. And I know that businessman Mark had told me about something positive that you guys have done. I don't know whether you want to give a report on that or not, but, you know, one of the agreements that I thought that we had is each time that we would give a report on what we've done, and you guys would give some feedback on what you guys have done.
I talked to Mr. Jones on the phone several weeks ago, and we'd been to the MML Conference, and I went to a session on diversification of the workforce, and talked to a lady that did the program about hiring African Americans for police officers and firefighters, and how we had trouble getting people to apply. And she is supposed to be sending me some information on some organizations here in the United States, and haven't gotten that yet, but I'm sure I will very soon.
Thank you. You'd be applauded for that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, City Manager Massingham, City Council Mark Richardson. I wanted to speak for a few minutes tonight about the upcoming bid deadline for the city's health insurance consultant, and just some questions and some concerns that I have with that.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
We need your address, please.
3663 McLean, Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Thank you.
As you know, I'm currently the consultant of record for the City of Papa Bluff Health Plan, and have been since late 2016. We took that over at the end of that year. Basically, at that time, there were some RFPs and some bids put out, and I want to talk a little bit about some of the accomplishments that we have made since then, and some of the things that are just not always put out in the numbers, the numbers that get out, anyway. I've worked on this plan for a number of years, off and on since 2008, and it's sometimes, as a consultant, and sometimes just as an entity bidding on that plan, this plan. But I wanted to report on a couple of things that happened over the years, just so you could get a little bit of a, bit of scale on what we've been able to accomplish, or what I've contributed to this plan. In 2012, I was working on the plan, bidding on the plan, and during that time, we found some discrepancies in some reports from one of the insurance companies. We assisted with the city and their current broker at that time with those reports, getting them corrected, and that resulted in a recovery of $204,000. And all of these amounts, council members, you can come to my office anytime you want to, we can verify it. And I think City Council, or City Manager Massingham can verify all of these numbers that I'm going to go over. At that time, after that aggregate reimbursement was received, then City Manager Doug Bagby hired me to do an audit of the reinsurance from 2008 to 2012. That audit recovered $58,565.85. When we took over in 2016, during the bid process, I noticed a discrepancy on some reports identifying that something that was missed in moving from one carrier to another, and I identified this prior to getting the business, as a matter of good faith, to the city. That resulted in a recovery of $254,364.58. Once we took over the plan in 2016, we audited the reports and accounts, and we had a discrepancy that was resolved where Anthem had made a mistake, resulting in $75,391.51 back to the city's health plan. In 2017, we negotiated claims over and above the network discounts to the total of $544,526.76. That's a total of $1,136,848.70. Now, that is a lot of money that I've put back into this plan, myself and the employees that work with me. Those are not necessarily things that we have touted or been out here, you know, hurrahing about. But over the years, we have put a lot of effort into helping this plan get to where it needs to go. Recently, when this RFP came out, I expressed my opposition to that, mainly based on the timing of it, the short timing of it, being so close to the end of the year. I felt that it is not a good idea to do this at this time, because it's disruptive to the open enrollment process, to the things that need to happen between now and the beginning of the next plan year. The employees are in a pretty, were in a pretty good place with their benefits, and I thought we were making some headway there. So I suggested even moving this to, like, changing it to March would be much more conducive than changing it to the end of the year. But I was vetoed on that account, told that that wasn't going to happen. So my question is, is that conveniently came up after I addressed this council the last time, and I want to speak on that for just a minute. I had no way meant to offend anybody when I spoke to the council last time, and if I did, I apologize. And it may have seemed that I was questioning your decision. Yeah, I was questioning the decision that was made regarding the retiree benefits, because I thought that the timing was bad, and I thought that perhaps we needed to review that a little more in depth. So it seems like there's maybe some communication disconnect between myself, the City Council, and those people that are on the plan. So I would also ask the status of, the current status of the insurance committee, which the employees sit on. Is that committee disbanded? Is it still active? If it's disbanded, we'd probably need to let them know. If it's still active, I would encourage that committee to be involved in this process. I would also encourage the City Council to have a liaison on that committee, so that you have the information so you can make good judgments. Because it's funny that you mentioned the Missouri Municipal League. I've been doing a little bit of reading, too, about the Missouri Municipal League and the City Council, City Manager, former government. And from my reading, it's, you know, the City Council members are elected to basically conduct, or be as a conduit from their constituents, the information, what their wants and needs are. City, you're City Councilors, to convey those wishes to the City Manager, and he is to basically take that information and run the day-to-day operations of the city with it. So I would encourage you to listen to your constituents, listen to the employees before you make any decisions. I also think that the decision of who the consultant is needs to be made by, based on, you know, performance, what's happened in the past, not just what the lowest bid is. I would also say that you need to listen to the employees themselves. We did a survey two weeks ago with, we sent out 217 surveys to city employees and retirees that are members of the health plan, and we did, we got about 29 responses, so not a great response, but we only had a two-day window to run the survey. And we had a rating of our experience, four stars was 55 percent, three stars was 25 percent, two stars was 15 percent, one star was 5 percent, so you can't get them all. But I'd be happy to share the results of that survey with you. There were some other pieces of it that I just don't feel like this is the right form. But we have a lot of information that I can, that I can share with you regarding this plan. I've also told City Manager Massingham that, you know, I'm more than happy to step out of the way for the benefit of the plan. And in the past, I've made recommendations over my own plans in years past, when it was in the best interest of the city and the plan. I have a track record of doing that. I'll do it again. But I also feel like that our performance has been very well. I'll be the first to say my bedside manner's not always the greatest. But I would like you to please take time with this decision. I don't think it's a good idea to do it here at the end of the year. I'd like to see you change that, stretch it out a little bit. I've also got a conflict with the bid deadline. I've got to be out of town, and there's nothing I can do about that. My son is graduating from basic training in the Air Force, so I plan on being there, because I've put this plan and a lot, a lot of my plans above my family numerous times over the years, and I'm trying not to do that so much. So I'm going to make that graduation. I'm not sure if we're even going to entertain putting in a bid, to be honest with you, due to the timeframe that's been given, also that being on a one-year contract, I don't feel like that is conducive to what we do. It's just not, this is not buying a tractor or buying a piece of equipment. It's a little different, and we look for things for a long-term relationship. So again, that's where we may not, we may not put in a bid. I'm still undecided. I've heard from a lot of employees that are encouraging us to do so. I feel like it's kind of a stacked deck, to be honest with you, so we'll just have to see how that goes. But I would encourage you guys, if you want to participate in this process, or you want information, please come see me. I'll be more than happy to give it to you. I would also like to comment that between 2015 and currently 2019, the average plan cost per employee per month for this plan, it's the total cost divided by the total number of employees, has been 995 in 2015. 2016 and 2017, it went up to over $1,100 per employee per month. 2018, we started bringing it back down again to 968.97, and year-to-date, 2019, it's 964.49. So I think we're doing a pretty good job. I think we're better, in a better position than we thought we would be at this point. It's always difficult to control healthcare costs and healthcare plan expenses. I mean, everybody knows that, that they go up about an average of 7 percent a year. So I'm pretty pleased with the results. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to take them now, or at any time, feel free to give me a call, or email, or come by the office.
I think not, not right now, not this moment.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time this evening.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak? If not, we will move on to item seven, workshop items for discussion. The City Council will review a lease agreement between the city and Pleasant Hill Missionary Baptist Church. Mr. Massingham.
Yes, you should have before you laid a map in front of you this evening. The highlighted blue area is next to the Wheatley School Building and behind the church. That property was donated to the city years ago. The church has been taking care of that property behind the church for, ever since the donation, some 20 years ago. What we're entertaining is a long-term lease, possibly 20 years for a dollar a year, so they can continue to take care of that property.
Any further discussion?
Make a motion to move this to the voting session, October 21st.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, the City Council will review a recommendation to amend board membership for the residential housing board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Residential Housing Advisory Board was created a little over a year and a half ago, and when it was, the membership was spelled out as being a member of City Council, a member of the Papa Bluff City Planner, a Papa Bluff Code Enforcement Officer, a local Realtor, and a member of the Butler County Landlord Association. And what we're proposing is that the Code Enforcement Officer be replaced by the Code Enforcement Supervisor on this board.
Thank you.
I've got the next item, so.
Okay. Stick it out.
Make a motion and move this to the voting session, October 21st.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, the City Council will review a request from the Planning and Inspections Department to recommend zoning for proposed 3390 Canal Boulevard annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we mentioned in the public hearing, Busy Kids, I can't say it, though, Busy Kids Therapy LLC, Jerry Ann Roland and Stacy Blankenship have requested annexation, and the Planning Zoning Commission has recommended that when it is annexed, it be annexed as C-2 general commercial. That property, to the north of that property, is already zoned C-2 commercial, and to the west of it is also C-2 general commercial, and then the south and the east is county property. The property is, has been currently used as commercial, the property to the south, and like I said, along Shelby Road, is already zoned C-2 commercial, and more commercial development is expected in that area. So that is their recommendation.
Motion is to be moved to the voting session, October 21st.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item D, the City Council will review a proposed amendment to Section 405.330, Board of Adjustment, C revising the appeal fee.
Thank you. You. Currently, the application fee for a Board of Adjustments application is $35. That, not even sure how long it's been $35, but it's been quite some time. That doesn't even cover our publication costs for running our required public notices in the newspapers. So what the Board of Adjustments is asking is that fee be increased to $150, which is the same application fee that we have set for our planning and zoning applications.
Make a motion and move this to the voting session, October 21st.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item E, the City Council will review a recommendation for the 11th Street Bridge Grant Project.
We had the 11th Street Bridge opening, and the low bidder was Robertson Construction, and we're, or Robertson Contractors, and they've done a lot of projects for the City of Papa Bluff and for us, and that's who we're recommending for award.
Any further discussion on it?
I assume everybody knows which project it is. It's the closed, closed bridge that's on 11th Street, so.
It's covered mostly by CDBG grant. The low bid was $440,422, and the high bid was 603,352, so, 603,000. So yes, staff is also recommending Robertson Construction.
Make a motion and move this to the voting session, October 21st.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item F, the City Council will review a recommendation for an appointment to the Minentable Utilities Advisory Board. Mr. Massingham.
Utilities have records to destroy. They have to be approved by the council before they can destroy them. They have to be approved by the council before they can destroy them. Oh, I'm sorry. Got it ahead of myself. Yes, we had a resignation of the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board and we're recommending Philip, Philip Rhodes has resigned and we're representing or recommending Todd Talkington to be the new board member for Municipal Utilities.
Motion that be moved to the voting session October 21st.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item G, the city council will review a request from Municipal Utilities to dispose of antiquated records. Mr. Box?
Just trying to help you out, Bill.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, City Clerk's Office has a state records retention manual that outlines when and how we can dispose of antiquated records in the utilities. This procedure is completely controlled by the records retention manual. Length of times, we must keep records varying what type of records they are. Some records we must keep for life of the utility, others we want to dispose of on a routine basis. I believe in your packet, you were given a list of all antiquated records. We discussed this at an earlier advisory board meeting and would recommend the destruction of the records.
Make a motion and move this to the voting session October 21st.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item nine, action required items. AA, bill number 8179, the city council will take action on a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding the implementation of a primary metering rate. Counselor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion for first reading of bill 8179.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance approving and adopting a primary user rate for certain industrial power customers for the City of Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities Department.
Motion for second reading of bill number 8179.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Counselor?
An ordinance approving and adopting a primary user rate for certain industrial power customers for the City of Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities Department.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Young.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number 8179 is adopted. Item BB, bill number 8180, the city council will take action on a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding the implementation of an economic development rider for the industrial power customers.
Motion for first reading of bill number 8180.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance approving and adopting an economic development rider for industrial power customers for the City of Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities Department.
Motion for second reading of bill 8180. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance approving and adopting an economic development rider for industrial power customers for the City of Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities Department.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Clerk Young, roll call, please.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Bill number, bill number 8180 is adopted. Item CC, bill number 8181, the city council will take action on an ordinance approving a taxicab license for Joshua Counts, Jason Long-Hibbler, and Ju, and Justin Brennicky, DBA JJ's City Cab Company.
Move for first reading of bill number 8181.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance approving and authorizing the issuance of a taxicab license to Joshua Counts, Jason Long-Hibbler, and Justin Brennicky doing business as JJ's City Cab in Papa Bluff.
Motion for second reading of bill 8181.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance approving and authorizing the issuance of a taxicab license to Joshua Counts, Jason Long-Hibbler, and Justin Brennicky doing business as JJ's City Cab in Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number 8181 is adopted. Item DD, the city council of the City of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law, section 610.21.1, 610.21.2, .3, .9, .11, .12, .13, and .14 revised statute of Missouri following the city manager's report.
Motion we move in the closed session after the city manager's report.
Second.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Mayor, Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Now, just one item I'd like to talk to you all about. I received a letter from Fire Chief Stucker and I just wanted to read this letter to you. It's about the fire on Main Street a few weeks ago, but says that approximately 2:30 a.m. on the morning of September 9, 2019, the Papa Bluff Fire Department responded to a building fire at 201 South Main Street. Upon arrival, A Chef Battalion Chief Stacy Harmon observed heavy smoke coming from a three-story vacant building belonging to Diane Bueller. This is the old Woolworth store across from the former US Bank building on Main Street. After instructing on-duty responding units arriving unseen, Battalion Chief Harmon requested a full call, callback of fire department personnel due to the severity of the situation. Once a water supply was established, fire crews began to initiate an aggressive interior fire attack on the second floor of the structure. Captain Barney Merle and firefighter Chad Bell made entry by way of stairwell going up to the second floor of the building in an attempt to get to the fire which is in an apartment. There was heavy smoke on the second floor and flames shooting from the windows in the front of the building. Captain Merle and firefighter Bell were able to make entry into the apartment and contain the fire. There was fire extension above the ceiling and partially into an adjoining apartment and hallway. Other fire personnel deployed additional lines and conducted searches for possible occupants on each floor of the building. This structure is approximately 24,000 square feet and is connected to the rest of the buildings in the 200 block of South Main Street. It was extremely challenging to address the fire inside the structure with personnel that were on duty at the time. The efforts to contain and stop the fire's progression by all members unseen that morning saved the entire block from being destroyed. Everyone done a remarkable job and should be commended for protecting a part of our historic downtown area. I just wanted to commend the firefighters that were on duty that night and especially Captain Merle and firefighter Bell for their efforts and success in putting out the fire. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
You want to have anything else to add? We are adjourned, but we'll take about five minutes.